I have low brain fever and like cough. Super mad because I didn't miss this basketball. But, you know. Any reviews about that thing? Yeah. How about you?
Okay. Oh, yeah, stealing mostly carjacking.
Just more of that.
Yeah, so I.
Sat down and I opened my data.
Oh, my God.
I'm assuming that's head.
I know, I took mine off to charge it. And here's the password. Did you hurt yourself?
Huh?
Did you fall?
Got three broken ribs.
From horseback riding?
Uh, yeah, I did it like three or four weeks ago though, but I'm not wearing my compression.
Oh, sure.
Today, so this is my. I just spent some. She just told me.
And I can go alone.
I hurt my lower.
Do you need a charger? It looks like it's charged.
Yeah, you got full batteries. No, I don't, I didn't wear the, they don't allow wraps, so I just wore double Spanx. Looks like a charm. But, but I had my COVID shot, that's where I was coming from. And, um, I couldn't hear the thing.
Yeah.
My mom. That's what's going on. You're not sighing?
I should have, this tea should still be very hot.
That did the backwards thing. Just go ahead and.
Oh, do you want to try to sign?
I gotta go ask Martha.
No, I gotta, I gotta log into my email. Or do I just log into Google?
Wherever he's, he, um. Should you share it with me?
My God. Oh, my God, so.
And I would expand it.
Not sure which one is your, you do the full meeting details or the agenda report for the study sessions. I usually do the full meeting details.
Yeah, that one I enjoy meeting.
Are you getting someone to bring your computer?
I forgot mine too.
She forgot mine too. I can have.
It's okay, we can share.
We can just share.
I got my, I gotta, I did bring a notepad, so I'm good.
Most of the presentations get put up on here easily. So it's fine.
Just use this to go back and forth on the pages in case you have a question.
Now I can click this off.
I'm down thirty-three percent myself. I'm not sure that's, that's why I'm.
Minimize it, right? Right there, it's right there.
Are you good?
Yeah.
Okay, welcome everyone to the school board study session on Monday, December thirteenth at five o'clock. Before we get started this evening, I did want to let the public know that the school board did receive some threats or a threat after the November twenty-second board meeting. And so with that, we, it's being investigated by the Prairie Lake Police Department. And an email has gone out to all families and staff, but we also just wanted to let the public know as a safety precaution in case they planned to attend, obviously, tonight's meeting. And we did have a note out front too, for those of you that are here in person. For the time being, out of concern for the safety and additional measures are being implemented to ensure that the school board is able to do their business in a safe and orderly manner. The following are going to be implemented until a time that we are confident that safety is restored. We have had police in our, at our board meetings since August, but we are adding increased presence at this time for all school board meetings. And then we will not be asking any students or families to come to our board meetings in person for the presentations such as Laker Pride or the student rep. We won't, we will be doing that until we're confident that safety can be restored. While this is not a way we want to conduct the business of the school board at this time, we must take these precautions and we want to provide transparency to the community regarding the reasons for the changes. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Stallow with purpose and agenda.
Thank you very much. The purpose of board study sessions is so we can exchange information, make sure that board members have the information that they need as we continue a trusting working relationship between the administration and the school board, so that you're able to make decisions at the board table. And with that, this evening, we will be having a final budget discussion and review. We'll also be doing a presentation on our strategic directions around equity and our excellence work. We've got a couple of calendar updates for you, some middle school course offerings. Then we'll be spending some time on some policies before we move into the regular board meeting later this evening. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, it'll be final budget discussion and review. Thank.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Stallow, tonight we'll be talking about the final budget discussion. So a few things that we'll be discussing tonight are enrollment, our, the district COVID funding, revenue and expenditure adjustments since the board approved the preliminary budget in June. We have some graphs and some, the actual final budgets for all funds and just some information from the audit. Just our revenue and expenditures per student. Just talking about our enrollment trends. So we tried to, let me see if I can, oops. Not sure why this is sitting in the middle of my screen, but we'll move that. So I have a graph up here showing our five-year enrollment trends. And you can see that definitely COVID has had an effect on our district residents attending last year and again this year with the unknown about what type of hybrid or distance learning or in mask, no mask. It's really had an effect on our attendance. You can see that I have at the very bottom is our October first, 2021 enrollment. I presented this to FLIRP, our Facilities Finance Committee. Just talking about our residents attending, where our open enrollment out to other public schools, our open enrollment out to charter schools. So those resident district, those resident students attending either another public school or a charter school. And then you can see our open enrollment in. We have some, about fifty students with tuition. Those are students that are attending care and treatment facility. They may be level four special ed students. Or you can see our homeschool numbers have gone down as of October first and our parochial private has gone up. So you can see what that total is, our enrollment for this year. We have a longstanding trend of students leaving our district during the year, especially at our high school level. And so as we go through this, you'll see that our enrollment, as I get to that, you'll see our enrollment is dropping a little bit, but that is normal for our district as we move through the year. And so this is the information, you can see we're growing, growing, growing. And definitely that the pandemic has had an effect on our district's enrollment the last two years. This is our enrollment projections for the next five years. You can see where we are at eight thousand eight hundred and nine. Next year would be at eight thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven, so it's small growth. But there is some growth and we continue to until twenty-five, twenty-six where it's pretty stagnant and a small decline and then an increase again after that. And so four years out is a long way, so, you know, we'll see what happens at that time and what, what kinds of things are happening in the world, but that is what we're projecting for the next five years. This is our five-year enrollment by grade, our twenty-one, twenty-two projections. We're eight thousand eight fifty-two, October one, we were at eight thousand eight hundred and nine. Right now, we're eight thousand seven seventy-four. And again, that decline is a trend that our district has had a longstanding trend of that decline. Just people moving and making different decisions for their high school career. And so we usually see that. I did want to talk a little bit about our COVID funding. This, that, those items that you see highlighted in blue are items that we have carried over from a prior year that we were allocated in last fiscal year, but we did not spend the, all of the funds or any of the funds maybe, even though we were allocated them. And those other items are new, especially we just learned we are going to receive about fifty-three thousand dollars in additional funding for the declining enrollment from last year. And so not that it's a lot of funding, but it is something that we can use for our current students. And so you can see there's four point six, a little over four point six million dollars. Majority of that funding has been spent or will be spent on summer school. We have two, about three hundred thousand dollars for each of the next two summers that we're planning on spending for summer school and learning loss. And then currently, we're spending some of our ESER three funds for our Laker online program. We're also spending those funds for some curriculum items as well and ensuring that our Laker online has the correct curriculum, especially for our online students. And our, our students that are attending school utilize those, that curriculum as well. So overall, total federal COVID allocations by year, you can see what they are. That's what was allocated, it doesn't necessarily mean that's what's been spent. And so that was, that's where we are, seven point three million dollars. It seems like a lot of funding, but as you recall, especially in nineteen, twenty and twenty twenty-one, a lot of those funds had to be spent like within three or four months. And they were on things that we needed immediately for like PPE and tier one childcare and things that we were required and mandated to do that we didn't have funds for in our general fund budget. Revenue updates for the current year that weren't in the current, in the preliminary budget. As you know, the legislature completed their work after the board approved the budget. And so two point four or five percent on the basic formula, a little over one point four million dollars. Special ed increase of about four hundred and ten thousand. And then we received a bar grant of which seventeen thousand dollars that we are utilizing this year. And these are COVID, again, COVID revenues and expenditures that we have budgeted in addition this year. They're both revenue and expenses. And the reason I say that is because we can't get the revenue until we spend the funds. So we have to spend the funds, we apply for reimbursement and then we get the money. And so it's always going to be an equal amount of money. They don't normally, it's rare when they give us the money first and then we can spend it. And so you can see ESER three revenue, a little over one point one million dollars, special ed revenue, ESER funds for pre-K and our K-12 students, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and fifteen thousand. COVID testing grant, I know Dr. Stallow talked about this grant, that it's not required to test, but it's an opportunity for parents who wish to have testing. So that's four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars of which we can also utilize for nursing services for the district. The two, the ARP, Summer Academic Mental Health, a hundred and forty-eight thousand. Some ESER one and GEAR, those are from the very first year. Those are being spent and they have to be spent before we can get the ESER two funds. ESER one is being spent on technology in the current year for hotspots for the students that need that service. And our GEAR funding, it's been, being spent on money for PPE and those types of things. And our ESER three ninety percent is about seventy-five thousand dollars that we anticipated spending. I do have some graphs in this presentation. This is where our revenue in general is coming from. You can see the state is seventy-four million, our federal is four point nine, and that's mainly due to COVID funding. We normally get a little over a million dollars. State special education is eleven million and our local is nineteen. And expenditures by program, and so as you, many of you know, we have a seventeen-digit UFRS account code, so we can look at items by program code or by object code, just to try and look at things in a different way. And these are expenditures by program code. So you can see the majority is elementary and secondary regular ed instruction. And then we also have state and federal special education. So between the fifty-three million and the nineteen, almost twenty million dollars of federal and state special education, that's the majority of where our expenditures go. We do have a small amount of vocational funding. And then the rest is instructional support services, pupil support services, you know, talking about the nursing and the custodial and all of those items. Sites and buildings, and we have insurance, administration, and then district support services. So that kind of rounds out by program code where the district's funds are spent. I also want to talk a little bit, if you look at the state and federal special education, it's a little over nineteen million dollars. But if we go back to that revenue of state special ed, it's eleven million. So you know, there's a big discrepancy, what we call cross subsidy, of which the district utilizes the general fund dollars to subsidize special ed expenditures. And so we're not fully covered. We don't get enough money for special ed services in the district to cover the full expense of special education. And so the general fund is paying for those special education services. And then I have another graph here about purchase services. These are what we call the three hundred codes. And so you kind of talk about everything else outside. And so these are a different way of looking at some of our expenditures. So you can see the majority of our purchase services that the district utilizes is in transportation. But you can see what we utilize for repairs and maintenance, again, the insurance pieces in there, utilities, postage. So you can see all of those substitute teachers and fees for services that we have, leases. We do have payments to other educational districts such as the Southwest Metro for those items. So you can kind of see where that is landing. One item about our utility costs, I think some of you were in on a meeting that we had. We are one of the lowest spending districts in utilities. And it really helps us to put that money into the classroom. And so our utilities are very low compared to other districts in the state. Special ed, here again, I'm talking a little bit about special ed, but you can see the salaries and benefits, contracted services and supplies and equipment. So this is just the state special ed. We do also have federal special ed, which was that nineteen million for combined state and federal. This just shows state special ed of that six, almost seventeen million dollars. And you recall, we're getting state aid and special ed of a little over eleven. So there is a big discrepancy. Back when IDEA was first, IDEA was first implemented, the federal government said they were going to pay forty percent of the cost, but certainly we're not receiving forty percent of that cost from the federal government. And then our final budget, so a lot of our expenses in the COVID relief funds, you can see what we have there. So that has increased our expenses and revenue to offset some of that. So overall, we are spending down our fund balance a little bit, but we're still anticipating to be about eleven point seven percent fund balance per, per the district's fund balance policy for the, and to end this current year.
But can you just repeat, eleven point what?
Eleven point seven. And that's the calculation for the district's fund balance policy. And we also have updated a few of our other funds, food service fund. You can see that that is spending down some funds there as well. We're finishing up some expenses that we had from construction, that was part of our food service program, but also food and costs have gone up significantly as well as our other supplies that are needed for food service. And so we're anticipating to spend on some of that fund balance. And community education, we're anticipating a small growth in that area. Building construction, you can see that we're anticipating that will be finished by the end of this year and we are very close to that. That, the building construction fund, we may end up with a, a little bit of money left over after all of our construction projects. When I say a little bit of money, I'm talking about maybe fifty thousand dollars, something like that. Really just depends on how a last closeout goes of some of these final projects here. Our total debt service fund, you can see we anticipate a two point three million dollar there. Trust fund, that is our funding for our HRA for all of our employees that qualify for that. So you can see the money goes in here from the general fund and then is, anything that is spent in the current year for that is showing in the expense. That is held in a trust fund, so that's why it's in a trust fund. For that reason. We also have custodial fund, that fund is fairly new as well. That fund is for any fundraising that the, the students do that goes to another nonprofit organization. So pennies for patients, we talk about that. So we anticipate about fifty thousand dollars and that could be more or less, just depending on whatever fundraisers they have. Our internal service fund, that fund is for our health and dental insurances. So you can see what that is, we anticipate that being about even this year. And our revocable trust, it looks like it's in the negative because we, but we actually have eight point three million dollars in that fund. The negative portion is because of the implicit rate subsidy that the district doesn't utilize right now. And so we have covered the actual expenses in the eight point three million dollars. Look for the actuarial study, but we haven't covered the implicit rate subsidy. And so you don't need to raise the funds for that, but that's why it's showing in the negative, because that's what you're short overall. But you will never be spending that, so that's what the requirement is for the audit. Our revenue per ADM serve, you can see that if you look over to the right, that's Prior Lake Savage area schools. Our total revenue in twenty twenty-one was fourteen eight ninety-two compared to twenty twenty metro area at sixteen seven ninety-nine. And so you can see we're still that two thousand, even a year later, we're still spending almost two thousand dollars receiving, excuse me, receiving two thousand dollars less in revenue than other metro school districts. And if you want to look at our expenditures, of course, our expenditures are going to be about two thousand dollars less as well, simply because our revenues and expenditures are pretty close. So overall, we're also spending that, about that much less as well. Any questions about the budget?
Mary, go ahead.
A couple of things. First of all, on the cross subsidy, the eleven million in actual subsidy versus the nineteen million dollars in spend.
It would be sixteen because of the state. The other part is, it's federal and state, so it's about sixteen million.
When that occurs, would you, if you had to break down a percentage, is the majority of that in the same layout as the rest of them in staffing? Or is that in, do we see an abundance of those expenditures in supplies, services, you know?
It's mainly staffing because that's the majority of our expense in special ed. And it really depends on the students that we have and their needs that they have. And so we could have students with high needs move into our district and those costs could go up significantly without any revenue matching that. So it really depends on the students that we have and the needs and the services that they require.
Also, I, you know, not knowing how it's actually allocated and all that kind of stuff, I think I sent in a question about this. When I added up, let's say, basic utilities, gas, water, all that kind of stuff, I came up with a much higher number than the one point two four million, but I didn't look at what was actually allocated to, let's say, food service, community ed or how that works. So I was just kind of wondering.
I'm only showing general fund. We do have utilities and expenses also in food service and community education as well. But what I'm showing here is actual general fund utilities. I'm not sure what you're looking at, I looked at last year's utilities. We actually spent one point two three seven last year in utilities for our general fund. And this year, we anticipate one, two, five, so we're up a little bit. I believe that Mr. DeWolff has given a presentation also that shows those expenses at about eighty-five cents a square foot. We have one point three million square feet in the district and so this is close and matches that.
I just added up Center Point, Excel, Water, City of Prairie Lake, Savage, stuff like that and came up with a much higher number. So I'll, I'll take that offline and try to understand how that, how those numbers actually worked in the budget. The other thing is, is on the cost per ADM, on the two, that we received two thousand dollars less. If we compare, how do we compare with other districts with the same demographics? Because I know that other districts do get, have higher levels of free and reduced lunch and stuff like that. So they get a, they have, their formula is actually a little bit different than ours is because of that. Do, do we know how we compare? I know we're still lower from what I've seen online, but I wasn't sure.
Sorry, I, in front of you is a budget book for the current year. And if we look on pages sixteen, which show the annual technology level comparable districts, of which we receive zero and other districts are anywhere from, in our demographic, are two point eight million up to eight point four. And the next page, on page seventeen, if you look at Prairie Lake Savage schools as far as the operating referendum, we're at six twenty-three ninety-seven. And we both, we know that Chocopee just passed, operating referendum of twelve hundred dollars per student and Eastern Carver County added five hundred dollars, I believe. And so we are extremely low simply in those two areas compared to other metro districts. Yes, we are lower in compensatory, but we are significantly lower in technology and our operating referendum in comparison. So I would point those pages out here to say that that's a big reason why we are that much less. We also pay about five hundred dollars less in taxes, school taxes. Now, I'm only talking school taxes and I'll talk about that a little bit when we talk about the levy certification, but residents in Prairie Lake Savage pay about five hundred dollars less overall in school taxes compared to these same districts.
Can I, the cross subsidy, I wanted to. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm trying to remember from last session. Didn't the legislature do something, is it one-time money on the cross?
It was very little.
Yeah, it was really little.
It was really small. And we also got very little cross subsidy money and. And we also got very little cross subsidy money in EL services, like $5,000.
Yeah, well, and I know this is a little early, but has there been any discussion just given what the surplus has been, you know, that there be some emphasis?
We're all talking about the surplus.
Yeah.
But I haven't heard specifics about any of that at this point. I know we're talking about a lot of things, that's a big surplus, it's the biggest I've ever seen. And I'm not sure.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Because it's ongoing expenses for the state to spend those funds. I would hope they would give some to the schools, especially now with the situations that schools are in, just with the funding of COVID and the loss of enrollment, that they would really seriously consider that, along with the increased costs that districts are facing with inflation and all those other items that we just can't keep up. You talk about 2.4 or 5%, but you have to remember, 2.4 or 5% is on about 60% of our revenue. You know, state aid isn't all of our revenue that the district receives. And so, go ahead.
I think just, and I'm sure you've all heard from the organizations in which you've been engaged, certainly Masbo as well, you know, really looking at the importance of this surplus. Perhaps this is the time that actually we could get the formula indexed to inflation. That cross subsidy, I think, is another huge place that we can look as well as any additional funding. I think it's also important to remember, and Julie, you'll be able to speak to this better than I will, but this is not a one-time surplus. As, as we're looking at the next biennium as well, it looks as though that surplus may be not quite as much, but it looks to continue.
So there's your answer.
Yeah, I just know as we start to do a platform and things like that, I know what's going to come, but it just seems like the cross subsidy has always been something.
It's definitely on Masbo's, my organization, as well as many other. I don't think there's one that doesn't have the cross subsidy on, listed as, as a priority.
Okay.
We should probably bring that up at the legislative session a lot, but I do know that, that previous years, the state kind of points to the federal government for the money and they seem to be most of the block, right? So is our, is our, are lobbying efforts more federal than state or does it matter?
Lobbying efforts are more state than federal. We get very, very little money from the federal government. And maybe that's a place to lobby for it, but they've never met their obligation of that 40%. When we get a million dollars in federal special ed revenue, we're certainly significantly short of what their obligation is to schools.
That's what I meant, the state's pointing at the federal, so should our lobbying effort be towards the federal as well and joining with other states to get that? Because everybody's in the same boat.
I think it's, I mean, that's a good question. I would think it still goes to the state and let them, if they need to lobby to the feds, they can do that, but I think the money would come from the state in this case.
Okay. Any other questions? Will we see this later?
Yep.
Correct?
If you want me to, I don't think.
Well, no, I meant, like, it's going to be on the agenda.
For approval, the board will be approving this later in our actual agenda.
But we won't, we won't redo that.
You're not going to go through the presentation again a second time on one night, no. But we will be looking for approval in the next meeting.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.